Of course, I'm, this is not meant as any kind of like a criticism on Dean and the great work of Be Brave, Bold Robot, but I was kind of kicking the theme song around in my head a little bit and thought that I would like, I just wanted to, it's almost the same thing. I almost didn't change anything, but I just wanted to add like a little pizzazz. You know, I wanted to jazz it up just a little bit. And so I mocked this up. Uh, I wanted to run it by you guys and see what you think. Um, so let's give that a shot.
We said the things they said.
Hello, everyone. You've got Kemper.
And Skylar.
Sorry, I had to burp. And Shannon.
Hello.
All right.
Sorry.
Classic voices.
Okay, that's how, that's how we're starting tonight. All right.
Pretty great.
I drank my coffee tonight.
Let's do it. And apparently your claws.
Yeah.
Yeah, those claws do it to you.
They're burpy.
I feel you. Very burpy. When I switched from beer to claw, I was not prepared for that, the gaseous effects.
And it's also, it's almost instantly. I've only had like two sips.
Mm hmm. It's like that scene in Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. We all start like floating around.
Yeah, when I leave the, the screen, it's because I'm floating from the gas.
From the burps.
The claw gas.
That's fair.
Yeah. So on to more serious things. Um, today we're going to be discussing the emergency city council meeting that was held Wednesday of this week. Effectively, it was city council sort of responding to the, the pushback by residents during the George Floyd protests, the fight to defund the police. And I think also, um, in particular, Flo's very public battle with city council on their misuse of measure U dollars. Um, so let's just, let's start from the beginning. I, Flo, you mentioned something really interesting, like the, well, actually, why don't we just say for the listeners real quick? What was the resolution that they came up with? And then we'll work our way to that at the end of the episode.
So the, what they ended up voting on last night was that, uh, we now have an inspector general that reports to the office of public safety accountability. We now, um, have a, uh, have decided to endorse two pieces of legislation at the state legislature, one on use of force and one on the crisis act, which is similar to MH first is basically alternative emergency response, um, to policing. And then they also decided, and this part is the part that's a little bit vague, but to do some 911 diversion themselves. No one knows exactly how much it's going to cost. No one knows exactly which calls are going to be diverted. No one is entirely clear diverted to whom and for what length of time and all of the details that you'd normally want to have at least somewhat ironed out in order to do this, but that is what we are going to do.
Great. Um, so other than that one, which like on principle, on principle, the idea of diverting 911 to other people, just the concept is a good, right?
Yes.
Most of the other things that they decided on, uh, to the four of us who are police abolitionists, we find that all to be more or less bullshit. Uh, we are, we're over with, uh, police reform.
Right. It's the exact same kind of reforms that we do every 10 or 20 years or however often, like there's some awful police brutality thing and the government responds by being, okay, well, we'll reform the police, which means that we are going to pay a lot of lip service and nothing will fundamentally change.
Yeah.
And we've entered that part.
I don't want to dive into that too much yet. We'll get to it all being bullshit, I think later in the episode. Flo, you look like you wanted to say something. So if, if you want to jump in before we dive in.
No, just go ahead, Diamond.
Okay, cool. So let's talk about how, how the agenda was set up. And I, I think you're, it's, it's just so instructive and helpful to have someone like you on the show, Flo, because, uh, I, I think these are things that you picked up on, um, maybe because you already always knew this, but I think you also know how meetings like this work because you, you run a meeting, uh, the measure you commission, right? Or committee. And, um, so what did you find interesting about the way they set up this meeting?
Well, there are a few things that are interesting. One is that typically if you're going to be voting on multiple items, you would want those items to be, because you're going to have to set, have separate motions. You'd want those items to be separate items on the agenda because that way people can provide public comment on each item because they are indeed different. Um, and public comment is set up so that by the council, they get to decide, the chair actually gets to decide how long public comment lasts and when public comment is taken. So it's at the chair's discretion. They can do public comment at the beginning of a meeting. They can do public comment in the middle of a meeting. They can do public comment on the items, one by one, at the beginning of the item, at the end of the item, after council has deliberated, they have entire discretion on how that's done. But you have to offer public comment on each item on the agenda. And so in order to make that not possible, they made all of the items one item. So last night's city council agenda had seven items on it, but only had one actual item that you could call in to respond to. And there were parts A through G. And for four hours, they had a conversation on these seven very disparate items. And then you were offered one opportunity to call in and comment on all of them for two minutes.
So A, A of all, they don't want to hear.
Make it all one comment because there's, there's only one. So you don't get to A of all and B of all and C of all. Okay, two minutes.
Yeah. And that's it. You get two minutes for everything from this entire meeting. And so like it, this more or less shows you how little Daryl and the rest of council really care about public input and public discourse. Uh, they don't want to hear your shit. They, they want nothing.
They never do. Regardless of what the issue is, they never want to hear what anybody has to say.
Yeah. Well, but this, it just drives it home even deeper, right? And, and this, this started under.
This is brazen, right? I mean, like setting it up like this was a brazen act.
It started under that, and I think Daryl has just brought it to the next level. And so he makes it one item. Uh, and I think you said it's, it's their discretion to put the comments before or after the item. So they put the comments, public comments after the item because they didn't want to listen to what the public had to say. And then of course they, they sort of, how would you put it? They, uh, what's it called when you talk for a long time on the floor?
Filibuster?
Filibuster. Yes. I, I actually think it's, I actually think the purpose of the public comment being done the way that it was, I don't think it was before or after, because our council typically does it after the item is presented. But before they deliberate. And so what is annoying to me is that all of these things had points that people wanted to make and have a separate discussion about. And the discussion of whether or not we should even be considering using eight can't wait, which is a soundly debunked reform package that even the people who introduced it have disavowed and actually quit jobs over, right? Like, so, so the fact that our police chief is presenting that and that we have eight people on the council who say nothing in response, including, wait, doesn't that not exist anymore? That just says to me like, you're, you're stopping because the comment section, like the, the people who provided public comment had such insightful things to say. In fact, they were more factual, better researched and more succinct and partly by design, but also more, more like they were better able to identify tangible next steps than any of the conversation in the four hours that preceded it. And so it actually would have benefited them. And that, that's, I think, the hubris part of all of this. It would have benefited them to hear from those comment, those commenters in greater detail on specific issues instead of everybody trying to pick out their greatest hits over a 20 year, you know, compilation of albums and play those. Like it would have been better to hear individually what people had to say on each of these items.
Yeah, it, it really shows just how anachronistic and, and really outdated these council members are. They, I, I just listened to them talk and I realized they don't belong there anymore. None of them.
No. Well, it's also, I think like, like they know, I think another part of this, why they push it off to the end and then all just get on their phones and like stop paying attention when it's time for public comment is because they know, especially on this issue, but most of the time that the public is fired up enough to call in and make public comments, it's going to be uniform. I mean, I didn't listen to all of them, but I listened to like, I would say a solid hour of public comment from yesterday. Not a single person, there was not a single person who had anything to say other than what you are doing does not go far enough. We want to defund the police. This is ridiculous. Like, like all of the ones I listened to, like without, without an exception. Exactly. Exactly. Um, so yeah, I mean, I, like if they, they knew walking into this meeting with, what they wanted and what they were going to say. So I don't, like, it's not a mystery to me why they like push it to the end and then don't pay attention to it. But it's also like, dude, at the end of the day, it's like the clearest example of like, you, you guys got fucking hired to do this job to represent the fucking people who live in the city. What you are doing is the exact opposite. And here are all the people of the city who are here to say, this is what I want. Represent me. This is where we're at. And they just could not, like, they like, don't even hide how much they don't give a fuck about hearing.
Yeah.
You know? I actually like that, uh, you're bringing up the public comments, both of you early in this episode because unlike city council, we should center that, uh, first and, and early on. Cause I think I know the listeners are gonna, you, you know, that fucking, what they were saying, the council was saying was bullshit. And the way they set it up was bullshit. But, um, I, yeah, I think it's really important for us to, to take a look at, just, just how coherent and cogent, uh, these caring, uh, public commentators were.
Can I also just say that like, I, what's really interesting to me about the level of disdain that I see at, um, city council for public comment is that it's not like that at the Capitol. And I would have thought that some of that Capitol culture of Daryl Steinberg would have carried over. Now granted, at the Capitol, you mostly just come up and say whether you support or oppose a bill because that's all they really like, you know, that, that's the level of the conversation. But there's a panel of people, when you go into committee hearings, it's a panel of folks who will hear your bill out, um, will get to speak pro and, you know, for and against. And then there's a conversation that ensues. And there's nothing in the way that our city structure is set up that would not allow that. For them to allow multiple people to come and speak in support, a few people to come and get two or three minutes to speak in opposition, and then a conversation to ensue with the, the city council. I never get the feeling when I go to city council meetings that what often happens in committee is going to happen, which is that during the committee, members actually ask questions. Now, one could argue that's in part because this is, might be the first time they've actually ever looked at the bill. Unless it's super controversial, but the flip side of that is that they're looking it over while you, while the author's giving the presentation. And then they, this conversation happens with these stakeholders and then they ask questions. I've been a part of bills where they're on the dais. They're saying, I'm going to vote for it. If you amend this, I'm going to do this, this and this. And I rarely see that same level of conversation happening on the dais at city council where we're actually amending a motion that's there. I'd like to, well, maybe we could. And so that A makes me think that somebody's having conversations behind closed doors, even though Brown Act is supposed to stop that. Because there's no way that everybody's on the same page enough, even after all the comments, to be able to say, I'll vote for it as is. Not a single amendment, not a and versus a a, like nothing. And so that always makes me suspicious.
I've spoken to multiple people who have said that they have burner phones in city hall. They have secret thumb drives that doesn't show up on their, you know, work computers. Like it's, it's kind of an open secret.
Yeah. So, uh, so that always is suspicious to me. So a package like this and nobody had a single amendment to make questions. Um, it's also interesting to me because it also means that there's, there's not, whatever conversations are going to have about the legislation, we find out about it on Thursday, it gets passed on Tuesday in a new, in a normal situation. You know what I mean? Like, there isn't an opportunity for actual discussion to have any bearing on what is actually passed. When you see it in the agenda, you should be like, well, this is what the city is going to look like. Unless somebody big and powerful calls them in and they pull the item, right? But other than that, it's like item gets pulled or item gets passed. Those are your options here.
Yeah.
And that's frustrating because it means that we don't actually have a say in this. And Daryl Steinberg made up this package on June, I don't know, maybe 10th or 11th. And then he presented, he, he teased it the morning of June 15th. And this now becomes city law on July 1st, when they pass it.
Yeah.
Like, that's, I mean, it's COVID. I probably weren't underwear longer than that. Like, how is this possible? You know what I mean? Like, how is it, how is it possible that a package that supposedly this revolutionary has no amendments? His words and Angelique backs him up.
Revolutionary.
Has no amendments and is put together in three weeks.
Right.
I mean, all it does is, and we, this is, I mean, we're going to say it over and over again, but what last night's meeting shows us like very clearly, anybody who had, who was giving any sort of like benefit of the doubt to the council is that they actually do not care about what the people of Sacramento think. And they made sure to design a meeting in such a way that made it look like they had actually done the work because our city is so full of gang violence and there are so many gun deaths that this is, these are the, these are the decisions that have to be made because these are the decisions that are going to save lives. And they, and then they, they just like checked that box in their head and then start looking down at their cell phones when passionate people
Right.
who live in this city gave them thoughtful responses that like the citizens of Sacramento spent more time researching alternatives to the bullshit that Daryl came up with than, than anybody on that council did. And that, you know what drives me fucking up a goddamn wall during city council meetings is when someone will say like, I need to do, like, I think we should do blah, blah, whatever. I think we should all change our underwear, you know, every other day. And someone's like, someone's like, you know what? I'd really, I'd, I'd like to see us do a workshop on that. And, you know, we can get some answers to, to why we should be changing our underwear every other day. Like, you don't need a fucking workshop, dude. Like this shit has been going on for months. And if your elected ass didn't take the time to look into why this is problematic and why, why what people are saying is right and why what you think is wrong, then we'll, we'll see you on the ballot. Bye.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, to kind of, to, to kind of go off of that, like, so I've been to a number of city council meetings after police killings in Sacramento. Like I, I saw this, uh, after Stefan Clark, I saw this after Daryl Richards and I, and it's the same thing as yesterday. And all of these public comments, I'd like the, I can't, like, after I watched this shit for a while, I feel like I just want to lay on the fucking floor and cry. Cause when you distill down to like, what is actually happening at these city council meetings, it is communities coming together in pleading and begging with their city leadership, asking for, please stop brutalizing us. Please stop killing us. Like, all, you know, public comments vary, uh, in terms of, in terms of content, but when you distill it down, that's what is happening is that people like mothers who have lost sons and fucking people who have lost family members are looking at the people who make those decisions and fucking, and have the power to do something about it. And they are begging them to do it. And fucking city council and the mayor and the fucking law enforcement who's there, look those fucking people in the eyes and say, no. And like, I can't, I like, it makes, man, I, I, it makes me fucking speechless because there's just no, how, how do you get, like, how do you fucking get out of bed in the morning and go do that shit? All people are asking you for is stop brutalizing us. Stop, stop occupying our neighborhoods and killing our, our fathers. Stop killing our sons. Stop killing our cousins and our fucking friends. And all city council has to fucking offer is no. Fuck that. I'd like, like, the injustice is amazing.
And man, like, like, I, I want to, you know, I promise listeners will get started on the, uh, on the agenda items soon, but like, Skylar is, you're, you're a hundred percent right. And what's really galling is that Daryl will come to someone like Flo or to these family members, right? The Clark family. And when they say, stop killing people, he says, well, I think we can find a middle ground here. There's no fucking middle ground.
There's no, that's why it's so frustrating when he calls for decorum and shit. It's like, dude, people are fucking dead. And you're looking their fucking mom in the eye and telling you, you're not going to do anything about it? And then you're going to tell, you're going to yell at me about civility and decorum because I said, fuck you? Dude, you got so much more than that coming, you know, like, like it.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. We literally had this conversation. Because, and this just shows you how much time will change, right? So when we were trying to get the measure you committee, um, together, we made some recommendations from the community about who should be on. And they completely changed that around and gave every council member one seat. And it was this whole like thing, right? And we had originally not done it that way. And so we were really irritated and we came and, you know, afterwards he was very much like, you know, they ended up passing it the way that they did, but we got the, the committee to what end. Um, and you know, afterward, he was just sort of like, you know, you should always thank your, the people who help you and blah, 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 blah. Because I basically just went in and was just like, this is not what we asked for. This really needs to change. I mean, you only give us two minutes. So sorry, two minutes doesn't offer as much time for courtesies. Um, but I sent a follow-up message and I was just like, you know, I'm really thankful that this actually does exist because I think it's a first step and all of that, right? And so.
It exists because of you and Sedalia and the table too.
Yes.
I mean, sure, but I mean, you know, obviously we don't have any authority. It's just an idea until somebody in power actually votes on it. And so I said, thank you. And so the, you know, apparently that went a long way with a lot of the people who were there in city hall. But so that came up and I was just kind of like, okay, well, yeah, we were, we were getting most of what we wanted and it's, it's nice not to be a brat. But then when this came up, right? And I've had to fight him for weeks. And then this B article comes out and we, you know, have a chance to talk beforehand and he says, well, you know, I'm going to be publishing something in the B tomorrow and, you know, just wanted you to know. And, you know, what, how could we find the, you know, the, the, how could we, you know, get that, that $40 million back to measure you? I was angry. Like my, my response to that was anger, A, because it, it's not in black and white. And this is now a recommitment to the original promise, which has never happened. It's six million last year and four million this year. So I'm not holding my breath, right? But I woke up the next morning and I saw it imprint in the B and I was pissed off. And people were congratulating me and saying, oh yay, this is great, blah, 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 blah. And I was at first like, we have, I haven't seen a dime yet and we're in a pandemic and I, he's saying he's not going to defund the police. And I don't know where there's $40 million in their mattress. So somebody needs to show me a budget before I say anything. That's why I was like, I'm not commenting on this. I was like, second of all, it's not what we asked for, right? Because it still doesn't get us back. It's not equity. It's just getting back what was promised right now, but the police took extra money last year too, and our communities needed that. And so this isn't a win. But the third thing I was thinking was, if you can do this all the time, you made me spend three weeks of my life fighting you. And now I'm supposed to say fucking thank you? Like, I've made zero progress. I'm not even really back to the starting line about something I shouldn't have ever had to fight you on. But now I'm going to be seen as this ungrateful bitch if I don't say publicly, I really want to thank the mayor for his leadership and commitment on this. Like, like I really, I resent that. And so I will not do it. And I said to him, I was like, you know, maybe people would say thank you. A, if you did something that we were actually thankful for, but if you didn't always try to fight the people who you want to turn around and call your friends. Because you do this to us all the time and you make us fight you for something. And then you turn around and you're like, well, why aren't you grateful we did something? Because you didn't ask us, because you made us fight for things we should have never had to fight for. Like, we're not anywhere and I'm not going to celebrate that.
Yeah, right. Well, and even when he does do stuff, it's like completely toothless. You know, Dave.
It's toothless or it's too little, too late, or it's after you had to fight him for years on it, right? It's like, I'm not in a particularly thankful mood after I've had to grovel for food all day.
And if Daryl is as progressive as he says he is, then why isn't he using his lily pulpit the way that you use yours?
I was very clear with him that I can count to five too. And he could run the table in this town if he decided it mattered enough for him to do it. He could, he could get, and I was like, you're not doing community engagement, right? Because his whole thing is that people didn't back him on home, on homelessness. And I said, people didn't back you because you came with your own ham-fisted ideas. You come to the community and say, I'm interested in homelessness. What can we do together and how far can we go? And then we map out a strategy together and we bob and weave together. You never do that. You announce in the B, what the fuck you're going to do. And then we are called into a meeting 20 minutes later and asked, are we going to be down or nah? Knowing full well that the Steinberg machine is already out of the gate and is going to do what it's going to do. Like, we never get to weigh in. We never get an option. And Shannon, I want you to go in on this about housing because that's why nobody got behind your fucking ridiculous housing idea. Because you came with your idea and never asked us and you don't actually have any expertise or knowledge in this area.
By the way, you said you weren't going to get yelly tonight and I'm really glad we got you. We got you.
You know, it's, it's COVID and I'm black and I've been black for a real long time. And I just ain't got it. I'm too colety. Where's my shirt? I am too tired to code switch. Too tired.
Please don't. Um, Shannon, you know, you, can you speak to, like Flo's talking about Daryl saying this and that, and then not engaging the actual experts, right? The actual people who know shit. I mean, you've dealt with this for fucking years with this guy and homelessness, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's so, um, you know, as a direct service worker, we are not, um, experts, right? Like to.
I consider you an expert.
To politicians. I mean, I, I think we are, of course, of course we're experts. It's what we do every fucking day. Like, we know the problems like the back of our hand. And we've also had so many fucking conversations that we know the solutions.
Oh, you're being sarcastic. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I'm very dry. Um,
What? What do you mean I'm an expert? How can I stop a steamship?
These two are drinking vodka tonight. Um, so, yeah, so, so we are experts and we should be like, the expertise in this community should be activated for, for, for any number of things. Fuck, we saw some expertise come out of that meeting last night in public comment. The thing is, and especially with Daryl, is that he is such a fucking elitist piece of shit that he doesn't, he doesn't want anyone to help him or to give him ideas because his self-confidence and his self-worth is so fucking low that he needs to do it all on his own so that he feels like, like he is like, you know, the, the magician, the guy with all the control and all the ideas and I did it and I didn't need any help. Um, and I think.
Go ahead.
And, and that, it's, it's problematic. Sacramento has a long history of problematic, the, the absence of community engagement, right? And that is incredibly problematic because we work in these silos in this community where like people are doing things, there's like a duplication of services or like duplication of ideas. And we're, we are, you know, cliche or not, like stronger together. Let's pull our ideas together and let's figure out how the fuck to do this. And PS in terms, if we're talking about homelessness, I, the solution is actually pretty simple. Um, it's housing. And it's providing people with services in order to maintain that housing. Like, these are not, this is not a, um, I don't know, like, uh, like, like this idea, I just, I just woke up and I had it. Like, this is something we've been talking about for fucking decades.
But that is something that the city council will do is wake up, have an idea and it becomes policy in three weeks.
Right. Also, what folks like Daryl do is, again, they don't view you as an expert, which is what you fucking are. You're an expert. You know the answers. And, and like many, many people in the spaces of homelessness know the answers. But they don't want to listen. What they consider you is a stakeholder.
Right.
So they sit down with like some of your reps and then they sit down with like the fucking business district reps. And they think it's an equal fucking conversation. And they try and find the middle ground between those. And they try and find the middle ground between those two when they don't give a shit about people who are experiencing homelessness. They don't know a goddamn thing about the concept of homelessness, about the answers to it.
I think it's also like, do we have, we have this issue of like, and Flo described it when she's talking about this B article and these conversations that she's had with Daryl and, and probably others, that it's like, you can't, they don't want to see you like come at them sideways, right? Like, and they don't understand when you do. It's like, what, like, why are you so upset? Let's just have a conversation. And it's like, you don't fucking listen. You don't listen to anyone ever. And I think I, there are plenty of folks who shall remain nameless colleagues who sit pretty in meetings with people and don't push back and don't, like, fuck decorum, dude. At this point, fuck decorum and we gotta call people, call the shit for what it is. And like, listen, Daryl, like, you're not a master, so let's, let's put that away. Like, you can't, you can't try to like employ that, like, I own this town shit.
Right.
I can't.
Right.
Yeah. Um, I think like another thing that's like really frustrating about it, and it's clear on this issue, it's always clear whenever, whenever homelessness is hap, is a, is a topic in city council, these guys don't wanna, they, they don't actually care about those issues and they don't care if they solve them or not. What they care about is getting people like Shannon and Flo to like, give them enough to where they'll shut up and go away. And they don't have to fucking listen to it anymore. But that's their impetus. That's their impetus for doing anything. That's, they're not trying to solve anything.
One better, Skylar. I'm gonna do you one better. I'm gonna bridge your comment and I'm gonna bridge the other, the other comment, I think, that, that Shannon and Dave were making. Because literally the words that he uses all the time are principled compromise. And I have, I said to him directly, some compromises aren't principled. And I always use the example because, you know, I'm an epidemiologist. I've probably said it on the show at least four or five times. Of Jenny McCarthy, an immunologist, don't get equal two minutes to have a conversation about the merits of vaccines. They don't. And I was like, now, they can all comment during public comment. But if we're actually having a debate and we're deciding whose opinions to weigh, certain opinions weigh heavier than others. And that's part of the reason why you need to listen, because you never know who those stakeholders are going to be. If we're talking about gun violence and mothers of people, uh, mothers and parents of, of people who have lost children come to you and say, my kids had no programs in our, in our community. They dealt with structural racism and this is why my kid is dead? You listen to them and you don't listen to the homeowner in freaking Land Park who's like, I just don't want the riffraff around my garden. Like, those are not, like, you have to listen.
Those two, those two points are not equal.
Right? And you have to figure out proximity to the issue, experience with the issue, right? Research on the issue. Like, all of these things are gonna come into play to help you make a decision on what you should consider, how much you should consider it, and if you should consider it at all. Because some opinions just don't, they don't, they don't merit consideration. And so what I was saying to him was like, the entire history of American, like, social justice work is filled with rights and wrongs. There's not really a, a great gray area. We look back at like the people in 1852 going slave states and free states, let's balance them. And we're like, what the fuck were you thinking? We look back on separate but equal and we're like, what the fuck were you thinking? We look back on Don't Ask, Don't Tell and we're like, what the fuck were you thinking? Like, we're gonna look back on Measure You and we're gonna be like, what the fuck were you thinking? We're gonna look back on all these city budgets and we're gonna be like, what the fuck were you thinking? Because at some point, it does not make sense that the people, literally, there's always a time when the police are gonna get money over the people. But there's never a time when the people get money over the police.
Right.
Right.
Daryl, you were the white moderate we were warned about.
Hundred percent.
Can I please start on the meeting? Uh, this was very needed and I'm really glad we did.
Sorry, it was catharsis. You know.
Like, last night, uh, and, and I think, I think I was underestimating that it was, it was galling to the degree of their Stephon Clark meetings. It was, it was something that, um, that was just really unacceptable and, and I, I.
Uniquely unprepared.
Yes. And I'm totally okay with us, uh, making time and space to, to let loose the same way that I'm sure listeners want to.
Yeah, you have to. I mean, like, I like, I don't know. This one, I watched this, I, I didn't obviously attend this one and I wasn't watching as it happened. But I spent pretty much my whole afternoon going back over it and like, I don't know how you guys deal with this shit. It makes me want to just like drink a gallon of whiskey and just like curl up in the ball in the middle of my living room and cry. It's like, it's, it's so, yeah, I don't know. I guess all I'm trying to say is that I did need the catharsis. Thank you for letting me have it.
Yeah. It makes me want to go for a run, but I broke my toe after Tiffany's.
Yeah.
I'm still.
We shouldn't laugh at that. This show and COVID-19 has made me just laugh at things that aren't appropriate. Like, I'm laughing that Skylar tells us we don't, he doesn't have a job. Now I'm laughing that you're broken. Like, it's just not right. Like, something is off here. I like dark humor, but not this dark, okay?
To be fair, with Dave's toe, like, the thing was that that episode with Tiffany was so good that as soon as we were done with it, he ran up and ran into a wall.
Yeah, like I just straight up ran into a wall.
That's a testament to what a great guest Tiffany was, I think. Yeah.
No, I'm.
Yeah, what a great article she wrote in Cal Matters the other day.
Oh, my God. I was hoping we'd get to that today. Um, uh, okay, why don't we just take?
Well, we gotta, we gotta move along if we're gonna get to it.
We will have a conversation about that because it also plays into what's happening with the prisons and like, we need to have a whole other episode about that again. So.
Okay, okay. Well, anyway, Tiffany took Attorney General, uh, uh, how do you pronounce his first name?
Javier Becerra?
Javier Becerra, uh, to task with his, uh, recommendations on police reform. And she said, that's not enough. Uh, this was a Cal Matters piece and it was just phenomenal. Um, she's been doing great work. Uh, Aubrey at ACLU has been doing amazing work throughout all of this too. And basically, they were spearheads on the fight to get people who were arrested, uh, after curfew during the mayor's really fucking ridiculous curfew. They basically pressured, um, the city attorney to a degree that no one will be, uh, facing any charges. So that's, that's really impressive, I think. So let's move on to the meeting.
Okay, so the meeting starting was, started with storytelling, right?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about the story.
About how dangerous the streets are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Apparently we have like a gang violence issue, right?
Yeah, so actually Sacramento is just dangerous and we need to remind you of that repeatedly so that you will then be reminded of the only people you've ever been socialized to handle that problem. Um, because it's not one that you want to get out there and, you know, handle these, these, these folks, right?
So they trot Chief Hahn out.
Yes, Chief Hahn is trotted out and he then proceeds to tell us how many guns have been, how many gunshots have been fired, how violence is up, how, you know, people are dying, how this is, you know, this is, this, this city is just, you know, a complete and utter, you know, wasteland and we need to, you know, to do something about that immediately. Which I agree with. I just disagree with your solution. We.
He kept quoting those like things that listen for gunshots.
Yes.
I don't know anything about those. Does a shot spotter, can a shot spotter tell the difference between a handgun and like a firecracker? Cause that's been going on since like fucking May.
Supposedly they are, supposedly they are able to like triangulate and they, you know, they follow up and they, you know, get a certain level of precision. But there's a high degree of, it, it'll go off and then they get to go in and say, oh, we think that's shots. We think it's the same or the other. But it goes off for things that are not.
I try, I for one trust their judgment.
Yeah, of course.
The council just decided, just approved a $2 million spend to.
I measure you. That's what your hard tax dollars go.
To pay for that shot spotter technology.
Which does nothing. It doesn't do dick.
It doesn't, no.
Let's go. Okay, so Chief Hahn comes out and he's talking about how violent Sacramento is. And my favorite thing about this.
Mad Max hellscape.
Yeah, my favorite thing about this is like, cops never went away during this.
Right.
Cops aren't preventative. They're not a preventative force. They're, they're a reactive force. And they're not stopping any crime.
Correct.
All they do is respond to it and they're not good at that job either.
Correct.
He's not good at like finding people who actually did the crimes.
Correct. So the way that this works, shut up, Simi.
Thank you, Simi.
Simi's pissed.
Fired up, Simi.
He is. He's, he's fired up probably about these fireworks and other things that are always happening outside that he's like, don't you people hear this? So interesting things, a little bit of exposition. First, the chief does this and then up immediately after him is Julius Thibodeau from Advance Peace. Who then, Advance Peace, a program that the police department does not support, although they won't say that outright, but they do not.
Can you explain what the program is?
And yes, I will. And, and that the city manager's office does not support and that the city council does not support. So let's start with just that, because I will need you to know that before you know what it is. So Advance Peace is a program that was started in Richmond and it basically enrolls the people who we know are involved in street life, but maybe you don't already have a rap sheet on or you can't quite get the, what you need in a typical criminal justice system to be able to lock them up, right? And so it tries to go in and address gun violence by enrolling them in programs that give them excursions, that give them stipends, right? So that they're not, um, as in need of money. Um, and that allow them to be able to form relationships with other people who are in the life, but who are across the city from them and other sometimes rival neighborhoods in an effort to cut down on the willingness to be able to shoot at or, you know, and engage in, in, uh, in violence with people who are in other neighborhoods, right? Because that can be a thing. Like it's, you know, it's, it's sort of your group versus other groups, right? And so, so that has been a whole, like, so that program has been really successful in his like decreased gun violence, um, involvement and, um, deaths by, by like over 80% in most places that it's, it's, um, you know, been, but it's not part of the police department. They actually hire people who are, you know, maybe former felons or people who used to be in the life or that sort of thing, who know the community really well and can reach these populations. And 95%.
Fucking like it then.
Yes. And 95% of the people in the, of the, the, um, fellows is what they call the junior and senior fellows. So the younger ones and the older ones are, um, people who've never been in another program before. That means they're not going to your pop-ups. They're not going to, you know, your, your festivals. They're not already enrolled in after-school programs and, you know, and, and school sports and things like that. They are reaching the population they are intended to reach. And that is done by making sure that there's money and that there's it and there's that. And so the way that it's been framed by opposition is this is a, a program that pays criminals not to do crime. Instead of, this is a program that meets people who are in the continuum of the violence, you know, the, the violent spectrum from advancing further. And breaks them from that pipeline and makes us all safer in the process. So in the immediate aftermath of passing legislation or passing a, a budget that includes them and funds them, we had two years where we didn't have any juvenile homicides. And that only changed during COVID-19. Now, what have, what has everybody in the community been saying for forever before COVID-19? We need to invest more in this. This is not going to be enough. We need to also think about how we build up the neighborhoods. We need more prevention services around. We need, like, all of the things that could happen if we had a far less funded police force. But now we're gonna trot them out as the thing that's been the answer to the gun violence that needs more money. So yes, they did get, I think it is 750,000 extra dollars last night, but that was done in a conversation about police reform. That was what this whole conversation was about. And they got the least probably amount of money, even given their current budget, which is like a one, 150 times smaller than the police budget. And they are largely, along with other underfunded community partners like Brother to Brother and Black Child Legacy and Voices of Youth and other programs like that, they are responsible for the two years of no shootings. And they have a pittance of the police budget. Police have never by themselves been able to do that kind of work.
And COVID started.
And then COVID started and kids are out of school.
Policing doesn't go away. Policing is still just as rampant as ever.
Stress is high, financial stress is high, right? All these things that we know contribute to violence are up. And so Advance Peace said at the beginning of this, if we can't get together the way we were, if, if, if they can't continue their lives the way they are, we anticipate there will be problems, even if those problems are not with our fellows. Because the rest of the kids, because we have some fellows in our program, but let's be clear here. The program doesn't reach all the kids who could be fellows. There's a lot of would-be fellows out there who aren't in the program.
So effectively, you know, a lot of these programs, um, and, and I'm not sure if like Barry's program too, and the other ones like are disrupted by COVID, right?
They are. I mean, they're regular routines and teenagers, you know, I mean, we can do Zoom chats and whatever else, but it's not the same.
Sorry, listeners, Barry's program is Voices of Youth. Yeah. Um, and, and, yeah, right. So as you're saying, like, they're disrupted a bit. But police are not disrupted. Violence goes up apparent, you know, by, by at least what Chief Hahn is saying. And we immediately couch it as in the city council meeting that like, well, we, you know, this is, this is a dangerous place and we gotta fund cops because we need cops to keep us safe, right?
Yeah.
It's a classic copaganda. And then they.
And everybody can see through it. And they, like, people are not like, like so many people can see through it.
Yeah, well, and then, and then they look down.
And it's a shame we can't give the COVID cares dollars to the police.
Right.
Right.
So I guess we have to give it to, to Advance Peace who freaking deserved it anyway. Because they're not the police department and they're not funded out of the police department. And so they can actually get money to do the prevention work that they already are doing. And so yes, they do deserve more money during COVID because they need it. But they needed this money before COVID and the police took it all.
These are, these are programs that actually serve people. They actually help these kids. They actually put, you put them like in, in safety, right? Uh, they make them safer.
They're a net positive for the community, not a net negative.
Idiot neoliberal fucking cops watching, fucking CSI watching, fucking moron neoliberal city council members continue to try to funnel all of our fucking money to the cops.
I think something that is so like disappoint, I mean, the, all it is, is disappointments. After last night and everything that fucking comes out of City Hall is disappointing. And I think, like, thinking about the meeting that happened last night, where I land is without any doubt, we have a city council that refuses to imagine an anti-racist world. They refuse to, they refuse to participate in anti-racist action. And therefore they actively perpetuate systemic racism in our community. They refuse to imagine a community with, like, we don't even, you know, abolition is the answer. And I think, like, we all know that. But we don't even need them at that, we didn't even need them yesterday at that meeting to say, everything that we do from this point forward is working toward abolition. What we needed them, what this community needed for them to say is, we see you, we hear you, Black Lives Matter, and therefore we will invest in community instead of investing in the carceral and police state. And they chose instead to invest in terrorism and locking people up. Where, what does that do actually? If you continue to fund police, police who are out to really just lock people up, what do you do? Like, all you're doing is like pulling, pulling dysfunction, which is disorder, disorder as a result of poverty and be, being marginalized over and over and over again. Like, you, you've caused this disorder. You're just pulling it out of a community, therefore creating more disorder and then putting hell of it into a prison. Where it's, you just got a bunch of people who, who are like forgotten.
I, I would.
Well, they're, they're not forgotten. They're generating money. They're generating money for the people who own the prison, people who have a fucking vested financial interest in having them in the fucking.
And I would push back and say that I think city council is very well versed in saying, we see you, we hear you. And then they go and do their own.
We don't give a fuck.
We don't care.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
We see you, we hear you.
It's not even that. It's, I mean, they do it to everybody. They do it to everybody.
And they need to, like, what I'm saying is, I know that they say that. I, but what they need to do is actually follow it up.
Fucking act.
They're so used to pandering. They're so used to saying, thank you for your comment or thank you for your time. or thank you for your time or, you know, or sending a stock email response to somebody's very thoughtful, you know, email that pushes up against their fucking racist bullshit. That, but it need, that needs to, like, the time for, 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 for decorum and for like stock emails and all these like back, this backdoor bullshit, like it has to be over, like it has to be over. Like people are rising up and the fucking council needs to respond to that.
That shit should have been over 50 years ago.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, by the way, I just want to say to everyone, I'm okay if we go over a little tonight.
Okay. So I, I mean, I, I think what happened during the meeting is probably
That was an agreement.
Really easy to like, just kind of, I mean, there's lots of stuff that was said that's so problematic that we could expound upon, but in the end, the agenda happened. Like, that's how this works. Like, there's not this conversation. The agenda happened. I mean, you know, we have Chief Han gets up after this whole advanced piece conversation and does his eight can, eight can't wait, which is again, not, not a thing that we should be proud of.
So we're on to item one B now. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. So he does, he does eight can't wait. Um, and they basically go on and on about all the ways that they have gotten on board with, like I said, you know, soundly debunked, uh, you know, police reforms, as well as all of the other things that they've done to make it so that it's slightly less possible for their, them to kill people with impunity. And then they remind us that their job is really hard and that we don't want hesitation because heaven forbid that there is a shooting where someone hesitates and, you know, an, an officer is killed. And the example that they are always going to use for that is going to be the county sheriff's deputy whose partner was killed. Um, and they, that is drawn out even though it doesn't relate to most of the scenarios because in that situation, that person came in and started firing immediately. And so none of the exceptions that were, that are being
Right.
Basically, you know, sort of shoved into these
Them engaging a person, right?
Yeah. It is like they, they don't exist for that example, but that's example that everybody wants to tout. And so it's like completely, it's, it's mixed metaphors in a way that is really unfair to the conversation. And part of the reason why the reforms are not the thing that we want to do is because like Eric Garner was killed with an illegal chokehold. I mean, like
Right. That chokehold had been illegal in New York since like the early nineties. And they fucking did it and those cops
And they walked.
Yeah. They walked. And I'm like, and Stephon Clark situation, like this is not a violent crime. And you still pursued him for no rea, like, you know what I mean? We're in, into an area where you had no visibility and then said you were scared. Like, you know how you couldn't be scared? You could just turn around and go back the way you came because this person is moving away from you and you don't have visibility, right? So like all of these things are things that, that I'm tired of passing legislation to just tell you that you were wrong when you, there was, or were already things in place to tell you you were wrong and you didn't follow those either. And we actually people documenting more abuse.
This is why people
Died.
Moving on to abolition now because it's like, no, it doesn't fucking matter what laws we pass. None of it
Think about what it says, think about what the cops are actually saying. When Chief Han walks out and he says, we don't, you don't want us to be hesitating too much in a violent situation. He is saying, you don't want us to think too hard about the fucking citizens, about murdering her. I'm sorry, killing, uh, killing the citizens that we're supposed to be serving and protecting. We don't want to have to think about that too much, right? Like, we need to be able to just do that without thinking. Yes.
Exactly. Instincts are rarely to be trusted. Our instincts are socialized. Our instincts are racist. Our instincts are ableist. Our instincts are homophobic. Like, that's not how you want people to be responding in situations where someone could lose their lives is based on instinct. Our instincts, they fight or flight.
Right. I mean, the thing is like, the thing about police reform that like really fucking kills me is that these guys are happy to lay all of the shit like the carotid chokehold and like all this shit like that. It's like, but we have like decades of examples of cops doing shit that is violent, like, like blatantly, flagrantly illegal and getting away with it. So why, like, how stupid do you think I fucking am for you to be like, well, you know, now the police will have to wear body cameras, you know, or they'll, they'll have to. Exactly. Now they can't beat up children with lead pipes or whatever the fuck kind of bullshit ass rules they're setting out. It's like, well, arrest one of them. Get one of them in fucking trouble for breaking one, any number of the existing laws that already start or don't pass new laws like this because they don't fucking mean anything and it's fucking obvious. Everybody can see it. Everybody can fucking see it. It's fucking meaningless. Police reform, to me, whenever I hear people talking now about like quote unquote, police reform, I hear all lives matter. It's just like, that's a, it's a, it's a trash argument. It's obviously trash to the people who fucking understand it and like, and, and it will, and it will get to a point where it's ubiquitously trash. We will understand.
Let me try to move the plot line forward. You know, that, so item B was eight can't wait. And let me just read a couple of these prohibited chokeholds, like fucking yeah. Also, they still get away with that shit. Require de-escalation. No, cops are violent people. That's not gonna happen. Require warning before a shooting. The fuck does that mean? Fuck you. Require exhausting all alternatives prior to shooting. Again, this is like another very subjective
It's meaningless.
If the cop says, oh, I did, then okay, fine. I guess you get away with killing this person. Duty to intervene. So it's like, uh, the other cops around the cop that, that killed.
George Floyd couldn't stand there and do nothing.
Couldn't just stand there. Uh, that doesn't happen. Hand shooting at moving vehicles, fucking of course, like a lot of these, like fucking of course, right? Like e- effectively, all of this is just bullshit. And, and as Flo noted earlier, the people who came up with these eight can't wait things said, Oh yeah, bounced. We were wrong. We were dead wrong. And, uh, and really what we need to do is move toward abolition.
Yeah. They, they, now there's aid to abolition.
I think like we, the, our elected officials, the fucking police, they refuse to acknowledge that we have conclusive evidence that police reform is bullshit. It actually does nothing because you train police officers to not think about the humanity of the people that they are supposed to, supposed to be, what, what the fuck is it protecting and serving? So we have, I mean, Eric Garner is, as Flo mentioned, a great example. He, he was killed at the hands of police who used an illegal chokehold, right? Stephon Clark was killed in his backyard with body cams. The body cams don't fucking fix anything. Publicizing violence doesn't stop it. Like, yeah, now we just, now we can just show
Well, now we know you're liars.
Now you can't gaslight us, right? Like, at least there's that.
It's just like, well, okay, well now at least we have this proof of violence. Like, but also you don't get fired and there's no charges pressed against you because district attorney Anne Ray Schuber is a piece of shit. And actually doesn't care about justice.
Yeah. Yeah. So So, yeah, so that all happened under item B. And then the police commission comes up under item C.
Yes. So I, I think Flo, why don't you give us just a full round off on that?
Sure. So, um, so Mario Gera gets up. He is the chair of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission and shares recommendations from like two or three years ago, right? And basically as a start, the comments off with like, yeah, so we haven't met since February because you all won't allow us to meet remotely. And these are the recommendations that were presented to council in 18, that were presented to council in 19, like, so they've been, they were done a while ago. And the subtext of all of that was like, these don't even feel appropriate given the moment we're having right now, but we have lowered our expectations of what you're even willing to engage because you've ignored and sidelined us for so long. This is what we came up with that we hoped maybe you would care enough to pay attention to. But two years have gone by and multiple people have had to like die and be traumatized. And now you're even now willing to entertain them when they're so outdated and like, they were never that progressive in the first place. Okay? So that's all the subtext that's happening here. And so they go, you know, through the document and go through all of the things that they've had. And then the, then apology time comes. And this is when everybody gets to, you know, say, we really care about the work that you're doing. And we're so sorry. We never listened to you. We're so sorry. We never agendized your items. We're so sorry. We've adopted nothing that you have presented to us as recommendations since we were formed. Um, and I call it the sort of standard apology to, uh, committee chair of color for sidelining and ignoring the recommendations because we've seen this already twice this month. How many ti, how many more times are we going to do this? Well, we don't have that many committees with chairs that are of color. So we probably won't have to do it too, too much, uh, more. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much what is happening here. And they have to go back and forth. And so eventually, you know, Mario says like, we're really frustrated and we would like for you all to respond back in a ti, in a reasonable timeframe. What's like two, three months? Could that be reasonable? And to me, I was just like, yeah, because you all came up with this entire reform package in three weeks, but you've ignored this committee for years.
Yeah.
Years.
Uh, I would like you to try and get Mario into fuck it mode and, and try and, try and get him advocating as hard as you are. Cause I think, I think he could really throw some weight around.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I, I'm just, I'm, I'm so frustrated for them because I'm sure they're watching on the sideline as we were watching the budget stuff happen. We're like, oh, look at that. I'm sure they're watching on the sideline like, oh, look, wouldn't it be great if Sacramento had a police commission?
No, it's time for Mario's, uh, you know, committee to start up again. They haven't met since what, February, you said?
Since February.
It's time. It's fucking time. And city hall needs to make it happen. Uh, and if not, why don't, why don't, you know, maybe we can find a law firm to support them, uh, to do their own meeting on Zoom. And, you know, if, if, if the city tries to sue them over the Brown Act, you know, I'm sure we have friends out there who would be happy to help.
Yep.
So that was item
So that's item C. And then D is the inspector general, which I think is related to item C because my recommendation to the city was not to put this, this position under the Office of Public Safety Accountability Director, but to instead give the authority to, you know, investigate officer involved shootings and use of force incidents and full independence to be able to do that to the committee that already exists that you've been sidelining. And council was not willing to do that. They created a new position that's internal, that's under a director that they directly hire, that is going to have that authority. And you're still going to have the, what did Danielle call it? The impotent police review commission. It was funny because I was like, oh, Mario's next and she comments, impotent. And she was like, I mean, the committee, not him. And I was like, I don't know if that's TMI or TMZ, but it's no, not here. So yeah, the committee is entirely impotent. And now they don't get any more authority, but now this new person is going to be hired under the new OPSA director is going to have this authority. And I would just like to, because we're talking about institutional racism, before I turn the rest of this over to you all, I just have to say that I'm really frustrated by this OPSA director hire because they have hired a black woman who was from out of state to come into this role. She started three weeks ago and now she's going to be
Can you speak out the acronym?
Yeah, certainly. Office of Public Safety Accountability.
Got it.
And, um, so that's, that's where this inspector general position is going to be. And so the director is new, moved here three weeks ago from out of state. And so now this person is over one of the most politically fraught, you know, departments right now, doing some of the most politically fraught work and is probably still having to use GPS to get around town in the middle of a pandemic when she can't meet with people, you know, in person and doesn't know where the barriers are bought, the, the bodies are buried, doesn't know where the fault lines are, right? And now has to hire a new person who has the responsibility to investigate the police department.
Right.
That, like, this is the prime example of that, you know, diagram of women of color, woman of color enters an organization that ends with woman of color exits the organization. It's like honeymoon phase with white leadership. Then that person starts to identify issues and talk about accountability. Then that person is sidelined and triangulated and, and then that person is, is eventually blamed and pushed out. And it's called a communication issue. And I'm just like, I don't want to watch another person have to go through a well-worn path of what's going to happen when your leadership doesn't support you. And I'm saying that, and I know that some of the city council are going to say, Flo, how dare you say that? Not that you're listening, but if you are, Flo, how dare you say that? And I'm going to say back to them, look at how you treated Mario and me. And we're not new and we, we don't work for you. We don't depend on a paycheck to do our jobs and you won't let us do our jobs. So how am I supposed to trust that somebody you have direct authority over in an employment relationship is going to be any more successful than me being the loud mouth I am and the freaking police commission, which is the most popular commission that anybody knows about in the city of Sacramento? But I'm supposed to have faith that you let this out of towner in the middle of a crisis come in and deal with all the politics and she's going to be set up for success?
Yeah.
No, she's going to be the re, she's going to be the thing you use to be able to say to all the people of color who are upset and are calling out institutional racism. It can't be racist. We hired a black.
Right. We tried.
That's what's going to be said. We tried. Look, we, this black woman is here. We, you can't possibly be racist. And I'm like, this is institutional racism. When you ask us to mammy problems that we didn't create.
Absolutely. 100%.
And it's frustrating because she's not going to get the support that she needs because nobody gets the support that they need from the city.
No. Flo, what is, what, what do you think? Like, were you to run the city in, in place of an inspector general, what should be in place?
I would give that authority to the police commission. I would, I really think it needs to be somebody who is outside because the other problem with an inspector general
Mario and his commission
And his commission this authority because the other problem with the inspector general is usually the way it's written, only former law enforcement are going to be considered qualified. You know what I mean? Like, this is not a position that's usually written as a civilian position. Case in point, you know, the, the sheriff already has this inspector general position and it used to be Sacramento city's police chief, right? It's a former police chief. Like, it, that's who sits in these roles. And so I'm not saying that somebody who has been within law enforcement couldn't possibly have a keen eye for what's going wrong. But what I'm saying is I don't trust it.
No, I don't trust them at all.
Absolutely.
Uh, and even if they claim to, I, I would never trust.
I, I would rather this be somebody who's using the reasonable person test of reasonable people and not the reasonable person test of indoctrination into your field.
Right.
Because there's a way that, that when I talk to police officers, that they see the world that the rest of us don't. And I think that that can really create some potential barriers to being able to see how, what's reasonable and what's not. And I'd like for somebody who doesn't have that same level of indoctrination and socialization to be the ones making the call on whether or not we should investigate further or pursue, you know, some sort of action.
Right.
Does anyone else want to speak on this? Uh, or should we move to the next item? Cause I think Flo laid that out very succinctly.
Yeah, I've got nothing to fucking add to that.
All right.
I'll let, I'll let 911 response model and the rest be
Yeah, 911 alternative response model. You know, again, Flo, you talked about this at the beginning. They don't know what it is. They don't know what it feels or looks like. They're just like, I don't know, maybe we do something different. And they never, they fucking never, ever have reached out to a Santuah with MH first. So that should tell all of us how serious they are about
Right.
We had to tell them and they did just very recently sit down, but I could already see the handwriting on the wall when they started asking, well, what's their call? Like, we have this out of state group that, you know, has handled the liability issues. And I'm like, did you ask them about liability issues? Cause they do, do that. Did you ask them about their call volume? Cause they did. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that it's going to be a, oh, well, they're just not doing the volume we'd expect. Well, yeah, because they're volunteers and they're doing this in parallel. They don't, they don't have an advertising budget. Like, of course they're not going to see the same call volume as 911, like
Right. Yep. That, I mean, again, it's, it's Darrell and every member of council dropping the ball and not, not looking to people who are actually doing the work and people who actually are experts.
It's this unwillingness to acknowledge that there are actual like asset-based programs in this community that are transforming the way that the, the problems that are transforming the way that the, the problems that exist are addressed. And these asset-based community organizations do the job of sitting back for a minute and saying like, what, what is the environment or what are the conditions that have caused these, these issues? These, like, these, these, um, you know, if it's like, if it's crime, you know, like, why, why is crime so high? You, you sit back and you, or fuck that. It's mental health. It's Joseph Mann. Why, why did Joseph Mann die while he was having a mental health episode? Our community doesn't have any mental health support. On call, mental health support, someone called the police and the police are trained to kill black people.
The responding officer literally tried to run him over.
Right. I mean, it was like playing a fucking game. Just run him over.
Fuck it. What's his quote was like, fuck this guy. I'm going to hit him or something like that.
Yeah, I'm going to hit. That's, so, so I think it's this, this unwillingness on the part of our elected officials and the people who are hired by them or, or work alongside them of standing back and saying, what is actually working in this community? Because we have, and especially, you know, we've seen this in South Sac and in Oak Park in particular, community organizations that have come in and really changed things, have built rapport with folks, have narrated a story that is like, you are important and you matter and this community matters. And, and then they create these, these, this, these programs that actually help people instead of continue to criminalize them for being poor and black. Like, what, what, what the fuck? Your nine one one alternative, like, Daryl, bro, that shit exists already and it's called MH first. And of course their numbers aren't like, you know, as, as high as nine one one. One, because it's fucking nine one one, because as Flo mentioned, these are folks who are volunteers. And also because they work on the weekends, because they act, they have to do other jobs to survive, like.
And because they're not advertising except by word of mouth. And because like, you know, I mean, there's so many reasons why, but bottom line is that the police, again, get whatever they ask for and they never show up and have to say what they're going to do with it or how they're going to justify it or what their volume is going to be or anything. They get a budget. They get, you know, a certain amount of money for, for, you know, equipment and this, that and the other, and they spend it. And we're not asking these detailed and hard questions about what it's doing. I mean, even I was annoyed by the advanced peace conversation because I'm like, so this program doesn't have an admin right now. And you're asking about submitting reports, but you haven't asked, but it's been three weeks and you still haven't gotten nine one one call volume from the police department that has hundreds of admin that work for them and should be able to have this so you can make an informed decision on what exactly you can take from this budget and how much of these funds are available for diversion. That should be an easy thing that within three weeks, a functional police department that's existed for generations should be able to have. And instead you're over here harassing a shop with 15 people about whether or not they got you reports.
Right. I think what would be a tight, um, nine one one alternative for, for Daryl to support is, you know, like an equity analysis and figure out that instead of believing the indoctrination that like violence is because people are bad. We, we can maybe unpack the idea that the violence that these communities are experiencing is because we've just pushed them into a corner and not given them what they need to survive.
Right.
Like.
Maybe try asking why instead of like, what now? Ask, why did this happen? Why was this crime committed? Why did this person feel like they needed to do this thing? And maybe start working on that.
Right. And I mean, that's the core of Flo's work, right? It's like, why don't we be pre proactive on the determinants of these problems? As opposed to reactive after these fucking problems are already happening.
Yep. That's the core of public health is instead of just taking emergencies for granted, what if we had fewer of them and what could we do to make that happen?
Right. Why did they happen in the first place?
Exactly. Yeah. And what can we learn from the ones that, that have happened? Like, we, this, our nation just continues to turn the, turn their cheek to the lessons that could, that are, that are out there over and over and over again. Black folks are dying at the hands of police.
I hope you meant ass cheek when you said turn their cheek because I love that.
Turn, they turn from their left ass cheek to the right or vice versa. I don't know. Some people favor the opposite. And they, they just, they refuse to look at, listen, for all those fucking reports that, um, Larry and was it Rick? I can't even remember now, but.
It was Larry Angelique. Rick actually jumped into advanced pieces defense.
So, so Larry and Angelique want reports. Listen, we can give you some fucking reports on what's going on. The people who are giving you hella money, the police are killing people. And we shouldn't be giving them raises and more money.
And we're not sure why we spend all our public safety dollars on them when they don't actually prevent or make us safe. That's, that's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to fit. That's the problem we're designing around is what could make us safe? And you're designing around the problem of how do I give the police more money so I can stay in office? And that's where we, that's where we differ. That's why we can't get on the same page because we don't have the same goals.
And then whining when someone pours a can of red paint on your sidewalk.
If you're wondering why there's red paint outside your home yesterday, that's people saying there's fucking blood on your hands.
And you know what's frustrating?
And they're fucking right, Angelique.
They are right.
By the way, listeners is District One, uh, city council member, and she's a fucking cop.
And she's just getting all of this, like, it's so frustrating for me today to see, and yesterday to see all this, like, sympathy that she's getting from people. And she's like, you know, cause you're, a lot of you know what's going on with my dad. And it's like, listen, that shit's real, like family is real and like health and all of that. But you don't get to say, while you are in your house.
You ain't a victim.
Fully protect.
You're not a fucking.
Your fridge is full. You got a nice car. You get to go out and buy all the things you want. Like all of the, like, and your dad has fucking healthcare probably. Like, you don't get to then say that you're feeling, you know, really bad and hurt because someone poured a can of red paint on your sidewalk. Motherfucker, get a power washer. Cause you're not even going to think about this after a couple of days. You're going to.
No, she got the city to do it.
Of course. So how much did the city pay for that?
It blows my mind. Honestly, this kind of stuff doesn't happen more often. I'm certainly not going to like come on the show and advocate for it, but it is like, uh, like, how does this not happen more often?
I will also like hate for blood running down her driveway every day until she's out of office.
Yeah. I mean, you're not going to get any argument from me there. I just like, like, uh, what, uh, who else got hit? Somebody else got, uh, got hit that same night. Jay, right? Yeah. 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 That's what, I mean, that's what fucking happens. It's how it fucking goes.
You can't, you can't just like, you can't turn your ass cheek over and over and over to black death at the hand of cops and expect to have.
With zero consequences.
No consequence. Like, like wake up for a second and realize that this is actually the smallest fucking thing.
Exactly.
The smallest consequence. Moms lost their babies. Like, black mothers are losing their babies.
And you are perpetuating a system that continues, like, that continues that. You are actively working in a, like, as an advocate of a violent fucking system that takes babies away from their mothers, somebody shows up on your driveway and pours fucking red paint down it. I'm sorry, you're lucky. That's where they fucking stopped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What people are calling them right now. It's, it's like, we see you and we, like, we've tried everything. We've tried fucking everything. And now we want you to know that like, we're really zoned in on you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, where I land on this is I definitely understand why this feels like a violation to people who are elected officials. But I absolutely understand why people do this. Like, it makes total sense. It, it's because like, you know, you have turned completely away from a community that has told you over and over and against hurting, told you wants to be heard and want, and has good ideas about what, what you can do. And your response to that is, no, I won't do anything. And to the point where you go, okay, well, I know better than you and I'm going to do this little bit. And so I'm just, I, you know, I'm very clear. I said it when, when, you know, protests were happening and, and folks, um, you know, were, were breaking windows and things that I'm never going to tone police expressions of pain for people who have consistently and purposely been failed. I'm never going to do it. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not the person, don't run my phone. If you want to hear me say, oh, I'm so, that, oh, that's just, no. When people are protesting you, when you are in a position of power and they have asked you nicely and have gone about trying to get their, their, and you just completely ignore them. They are left with no, they have no voice. They have no way to change it. They've asked, they've cried, they've shown up.
For decades, decades, generations of people have been asking you for the exact same thing.
And you're not doing the maximum possible with that power, then people are going to be upset with you. And that's going to show up in a lot of different ways. And so, you know, you're the moderates, your beloved Dr. King. It has a lot to say for you on the subject. If you read beyond the fuzzy parts of the I Have A Dream speech, even just read the preamble. You may not, you may be regretting that whole holiday thing. But what I will say is like, I, if our leaders were actually the right ones, they would see this as a call to action rather than a violation. So I get why they feel violated. Someone came onto your property in the dark of night and did something that you didn't like. But if you were the right kind of leader, you would be.
Nobody, nobody would come onto your property and fuck your shit up.
What the hell did I do that somebody got out of their bed in a fucking pandemic? And decided to spend their hard earned money in a store where they could get COVID even with a mask? And then come to my house where I'm an elected official in the middle of the night to do.
And risk their fucking freedom because you know, the cops will take this seriously because it's fucking Angelique Ashby.
Just what, what might it be? What might I have done that would make that worth it for somebody? And maybe that's a call to action for me to be a better person than that.
This is the smallest, like, you know, I said before, this is the smallest, um, consequence of their inaction. And it is, uh, it is a really small example of the answer to the question, what is the environment or condition that causes people to do a crime? Do I think this is a crime? No, but they do. So, so.
They called the police.
So what is the condition that caused this crime?
The rest of us would have had to file this online, but they called the police.
Right.
Because they can.
Because they can.
So, so this is, this is as the reason that a can of paint was poured on Ashby and Sheneer's property, what the fuck ever.
And the reason that demonstrators go outside fucking Daryl's house regularly.
Right. At all hours of the day and night. This is because.
Which by the way, he actually lives about three blocks away from where that's been happening. That's not right up to his fucking door.
I've been concerned about that too. I know, listen, if you demonstrators want to reach out, I know his real address.
It ain't where the Black Lives Matter thing was. It's, it's close, but it ain't there.
Oops. Somebody got it wrong. Just say it's, I think, if, if, if our elected officials will just sit back for a minute and realize like the, the, the reason that this is happening is because people have been ignored and dismissed and not actually heard and gaslit and emotionally manipulated and not valued. And, and people are dying, like, like, this is what, this is what causes the crime of throwing a, a can of paint on your sidewalk.
Right.
Like, and also what the fuck, what the fuck do you expect? You public official piece of shit.
People are dying and you're doing nothing.
Doing, except for like.
You're doing worse than nothing. You are pretending that you're the, you're pretending that you're the good ones while doing less than you could while co-opting the language. I mean, we heard deputy chief, chief Kathy Lester say, you know, we're reimagining public safety with police.
Where do you think he heard that?
And I was like, really? Really? That's what you're doing here. I was like, I was like, apparently size does matter because my imagination is way bigger than yours.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So that, that all happened. Um, and.
I, I, do we even need to go over the last two items?
No, I mean, they were just basically supporting state, state, state legislation that we've already talked about on previous episodes. One is from Kevin McCarty, who is from Sacramento, and it's all about the, um, the use of force and, you know, some of the, the banning chokeholds and that sort of thing. And I think also overseeing things with, um, the Department of Justice, making sure that like investigations can be opened and that sort of thing. It's a gut and amend. So, um, there are a few pieces of legislation that are moving right now that are doing those kinds of things. But I think his is actually the Department of Justice thing. Um, and then, uh, and then there's also the Kamala Gervin, um, AB 2054, which is the crisis act, which basically makes things like mental health first and nine one one diversion, um, a statewide pilot, which would also allow it to have some funding behind it. So the council, of course, said yes to those. And so, um, so, yeah, so it, it, it was a, a major disappointment compared to what it should have been. Um, there were some things that happened last night that should not, including the fact that like now the, well, they've already been doing this, but they reported out that like the PD and sheriffs and other folks are all coming together to work on gang stuff. It's like, we don't, we don't need that kind of stuff. But there were some things that came out of last night that were not objectively bad in terms of the legislation they supported at the state. Um, nine one one diversion, certainly something we support. What implementation looks like remains to be seen. Where the money is coming from remains to be seen. How much is going to save or divert remains to be seen. So, you know, on the whole, I don't know that things got worse last night. But I also think that they didn't get, we didn't get anywhere near where we should have gone. Um, and it certainly feels like we should have already been there already. So that's, it's sort of like having to fight to get the measure you money back that we were supposed to have in the first place. It doesn't really feel like a freaking win.
No, I agree. You know, the, I, I guess I just want to like drive home one final point here that they think that perhaps this is a sufficient response to George Floyd. But obviously it's not. Nobody, nobody.
Nobody.
Nobody was happy.
People are, you, the, the citizens of this city and the greater area are uniform. And this is completely unacceptable.
This city in particular, and like I, we have listeners in other cities and I'm glad we get to share some of Sacramento, you know, uh, through this. This city in particular is ready to take it to the next step every fucking time.
Yep.
Um, because we were here two years ago when Stefan Clark was killed in his grandma's backyard. We were here one year ago when Anne Marie Schubert came out and disgustingly assassinated his character. And we're here now again during George Floyd and like.
All of those wounds are still raw. All of those wounds.
Not afraid to take it to the next step. And like, there will be another one. There will be another George Floyd and we will only bring it to the next, next step. And so like, think about that as you're creating your policy because people are so, so fed up. And like, you don't understand. And, and like, like Daryl sitting at the dais, you know, during these homelessness conversations in this one too. It's just like, he doesn't, he doesn't get it. He doesn't get what is needed in this moment. And, um, it's like, it's, it's.
I think he does. See, I would push back on that. I bet he does know what's needed. I think he knows exactly what's needed. I just don't think he thinks that he has to care. I like, I, I think that, I think that he does not think, he doesn't, none of those fucking guys think that any of this shit will come back on him in any meaningful way. They fucking know. Like Daryl Steinberg's not a fucking idiot. He can, he can fucking read the writing on the wall. He just, he, there's the amount of hubris that like, allows him to be like, oh, I don't have to do any of that because really at the end of the day, there's no consequences for any of my bullshit.
I think if he knew how this would affect his higher office, then he would be responding more aggressively. But Flo, you.
I think, I think it's both and. I split the difference between you. I think he both doesn't appreciate just how much of a moment this could be and how he could be a leader on this. And that he's not a 45 year old in the senate anymore. He's a 61 year old mayor who might be at the top of his career and may not have another chance, but certainly doesn't.
Fucking God.
Probably doesn't get a, another chance if he doesn't do right by this because we now have longer memories and we. we now have longer memories and we can haunt you with them a lot differently than we could have in a time when we didn't, when we weren't able to mobilize this and when quite frankly Sacramento didn't always make people pay for, you know, the 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 errors of their past, the unrepentant errors of their past. So I think it's a different day. I think the city is turning over. I think there's new generations that have reached different levels of their lives and I think he really needs to take stock in what he wants to see. I also think that there's a level of callous indifference to Skylar's point where I think he knows and doesn't care because it's not his issue. And I think I think one of the things that I see is that I I sometimes feel like he approaches this as a job, whereas others of us approach this as like something we love and if you happen to find a way to get paid for it, awesome. And I think he approached it as like, okay, I'm gonna be an elected official, gotta find my issue. Okay, great. Picked up my issue. Cool. I'm gonna take that with me and do this. And or at least that's the way he comes across because it doesn't ever feel like there's a lot of passion behind getting it done right. It feels like there's a passion abound him being
That's a dangerous mindset for him to have and people are dying because of it.
Yeah. And it's like we he wants to be right. And so he wants to be the one that came up with the idea and got his thing done. So he can take credit for it, but it doesn't seem like he's as committed to actually moving any of these topics that he cares about forward in a meaningful ways if it doesn't allow him to be able to take direct and complete credit for it.
No, you know, Daryl, uh, we know you've been putting out trial balloons on the strong mayor initiative. I welcome that fucking fight. I can't wait for it. I can't wait, especially after all the bullshit you've put people through. You you will be crushed on that. Um, you know, Angelique, you're running for pan seat. Uh, we're ready for that too.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely fucking not.
Um, so keep fucking up, guys. Uh, just keep doing it and and we'll keep documenting it.
Speaking of Angelique, um, I have a question that's not, I guess, directly related to this. Um, but now that like the mayor, the governor has kind of mandated that we can't do in room dining anymore in Sat County. Do you think that she uses DoorDash or Postmates to order up the police boots that she licks for breakfast, lunch and dinner? What do you think she's? Do you think she's a Postmates gal or a DoorDash gal?
I hate, I love hate this so much.
I don't know. I mean, she's probably
I was trying to figure out what Angelique had to do with you not having a job. So this was a a welcomed
That's I thought that was his seg. Yeah.
I kinda thought that was going to.
I was like, what did she?
I think
Did she come there a lot?
Whichever of the two is the most anti-union. That's the one she used.
Right. Yeah, probably. I don't know which one of those two.
I think it's Postmates.
Okay, she definitely Postmates. Um, so Angelique, if you wanna Postmate some uh paint to your door, what what is
Speaking of a complete uh lack of unions or employment or uh anything of that nature, I find myself with a lot of free time these days. Um, now, the good news is I've been filling that free time up with a lot of great content. I found um I've been finding these podcasts, these articles and whatnot. And really what gets me through this is is I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say it again. I I listened to the episode last week. I I agree with myself as I often do. Which which honestly segues us into where I'm going from here, which is uh we have, you know, there's, there's a lot of this great content where we have perfect takes and we dissect things that are uh that are they're relevant to the community, they're relevant to the neighborhoods we live in and what's going on around us and the takes are consistently a hundred percent perfect every time. My problem is now here's the here's the rub. I'm running low on this on this great content. Um, and so Dave, uh, I was hoping that you would be uh so kind as to instruct me as to where I can find more of this fantastic godlike content that has the most perfect of all the takes.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and I'm happy to help and I I too agree with you on our on our perfect takes. Um, we have voices rivercity.com. That's really the centerpiece of where all of our content lives. Uh, we'll be amping up again uh more and more, especially as, oh my God, we've gotten so much support on Patreon recently.
Yeah, for real. Thank you, guys.
Super tight.
It allows us to start amping up in different ways that aren't just the podcasts. And I think that's really exciting. So we wanna dive in more into news and we wanna have more commentary essays that we can, you know, push out there into the world from people who might not get their space, you know, in the offense section of the B. Um, and so it's all really exciting. Voices River City has a three year history. Just go look through it. Like there's all sorts of weird shit that is not podcast oriented. We are on Twitter at Voices River City, Facebook Voices River City. We're on YouTube and uh you can watch, you know, some rounds of air dicks from the last episode on there.
Yeah, if you missed out on the air dicks or
All right.
All right, all right, fuck.
Thank you, Skylar. Join in our air dick fun.
You know, our YouTube
Consensual safe sex. My air dicks are consensually engaged and it's safe sex. So
Yeah, be sure to get enthusiastic. Yes.
Normalize air dick.
This is the best. This is the best uh YouTube endorsement of all time right here.
And uh I suppose we're on Instagram as well. And uh Instagram is actually really funny. Um, Skylar always puts some really fun
Yes, it's always so good.
And um, yeah, we're on Patreon and and again, that's been wildly important uh to us and uh we we've seen real growth recently and uh we're actually on Sunday going to release some uh Patreon only content. Um, unless you don't have any money, just reach out to us and we'll give you a link. But like as low as five dollars a month, a beer that you're not getting at the bar right now, you can you can
They shut us down. I like to think of this, I you know, I think we should start wording this as a suggested donation because that's really what it is. A suggested donation of five dollars or more. If you're not in the financial situation where you can afford five dollars or more, it's not a problem. We'll hook you up. Just reach out. Not a big deal.
Yeah.
We want you to hear that. We want you to hear this shit, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then um then that's it. I mean, I'm on Twitter at You Know Kempa.
I am guillotine for you. That is guillotine, the number four Y O U.
I am Shan N D Stevens, but I have been thinking about changing my handle to I'm sorry, Toreen. I'll let you know. I'll let you know.
Yeah, you really disappointed him.
Oh, that's so funny. And I am at Flojane. That's F L O J A U N E. And yes, Toreen is not happy with Shannon because Shannon made a mug that says Flo twenty twenty four. I promise. Toreen's gonna love that.
For those listening, she just put up a little post-it note saying she's sorry to him.
Yes.
From Shannon at V R C.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm, I'll make sure that he watches this one on YouTube.
So before we get out of here, Shannon, you go, you go.
I was, I was fully gonna make a shirt because I was like, I gotta balance out my malfeasance. But I had a hell of a, I had a hell of a year this week.
Severely anti flow for office.
And the rest of everybody else in Sacramento is severely pro uh flow for office.
It's not even so much that he's anti. He's just kind of like, all right, guys, just
Right. Joke's over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's whatever. It's fine. I'm learning. I'm learning about consequences.
Before we sign off for the night, I wanna make two shout outs. Uh, as I was listening, so I I actually, I was on a uh a treadmill earlier for like an hour, listening only to public comments. And I wanna make two shout outs. One is a woman who actually went for the I cede my time, fuck you. Um, I don't know if you listen to the show or not, but I hope you do because I was like dying on the treadmill and I just got this big ass fucking smile on my face as soon as I heard you say that.
What was her name?
I appreciate you. I can't remember what her name was. I think she's the only one that I heard who actually went for it. Uh, the second shout out, and I know that he does listen to the show, Robert Copeland, you are a fucking Sacramento superhero.
Love Robert.
And one of my favorite things in the world is watching Robert dressing down Steinberg. And every time if you just watch Steinberg's face while it's happening, it is the best part of being a Sacramento. Like honestly, I've heard him, I've seen Robert do this to him many times in person. Robert, thank you so much for your service. It is always such a pleasure to watch you just like fucking bumming Daryl Steinberg out that hard every time consistently. I love you.
Phenomenal. Yeah.
There were such great public comments, like honestly, given the dumpster fire that was the rest of the meeting, just listen to the public comments if you're sure on time. They are amazing.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah, I I I got through before the show uh a little over half of the meeting meeting part and I'm definitely gonna buckle down and listen to the public comments.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this meeting is, I know we're ending, but this watching the meeting, watching the lead up to the meeting. I um just love Sacramento for showing up like
Hell, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
This city is like, if you wanna talk about fucking community, like Sacramento is it? People are here for each other and it's been amazing to watch all of this shit unfold. I love it. I love to think about it.
I'm thinking about it right now. How's it feel? I'm loving it.
Yeah. Same with our Patreon supporters. You all are tight. I'm excited about about, you know, all that support and still waiting for that squillionaire.
Mm hmm.
Hey, it's coming.
Who's coming in? Yeah, Agent Squillion. Uh, we love you too.
Yeah, we hope to enjoy this fucking episode. Agent Squill. All right, guys. Well, yeah, I echo Shannon's sentiment. I fucking, I love you guys, all of our listeners. Sacramento fucking rules and it's because all of you rule and uh
Amen.
Yeah, and that rules. Everything rules. Guys, until next time, everybody, please stay safe.
Stay safe.
Stay healthy.
Stay the fuck away from me.
Come back, Toreen, come back.
Baby, come back.
Baby, come back.
Bye.
All right, bye.
Bye.